That's five thirty. We'll call the commission meeting to order. Please stand for the play. Minutes, approval of the minutes is next. You're in the packet. Anybody see any problems?
I'd approve to approve the minutes to be as presented.
Motion is there? Second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Any additions to the orders subtracting from the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Roger Gunderson is first on the list. What's the little dude in the front? There you go.
Okay, got two estimates here for carpeting. One the old abstract office and the other up in Judge Foudy's former office, which he's there here every day yet, so I don't know that he's retired. But, um, anyway, the estimate from Lamont's is six thousand sixty-five and the one from Thompson's is seventy-nine ninety. So.
All right, questions for Roger on this?
I'm assuming it was comparable materials and everything?
I gave them both the same. We got carpet squares from before that we used and they each got the same carpet squares. So yes, everything's gotta be the same.
I would move to accept the low bid from Lamont's.
Motion to accept the low bid from Lamont's. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the low bid, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Anything else, Roger?
Nope, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, highway agenda. Jason's at the conference. Everybody got that pulled up in there?
Mm-hmm.
You, okay. So the first item there is, uh, doing some transition work from the asphalt over the culverts on Ramsey County four. Two spots on Ramsey County three. Appears there's FEMA money still available for those projects. Estimate for four sites is twenty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars. Entertain a motion to approve the bid so that work can get done yet this year.
So moved.
Motion to approve the work. Uh, let's see, that's for straight tri-state paving. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. To the motion, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Moving down the list here, we've got the projects on Ram, the soft spots on Ramsey County four and Ramsey County seven. Uh, looks like we've got a bill there for seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Looks pretty straightforward, right? This is all the breakdown adds up to seventy-one sixty. Is there a motion and second to pay that bill?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Uh, okay. Bulk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gesner?
Aye. Motion carried. Uh, the next item of business is a south spot repair on Ramsey County seven. Ramsey County four is almost done. Uh, appears he's gonna hold twenty percent back off the total estimate. Uh, he's looking for a mo- motion to pay one hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars ninety-six cents. Okay. This would be to pay that bill, one ninety-one, two fifty-eight, ninety-six.
Motion to pay that bill.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gesner?
Aye. Motion carried. He's got here, the surplus sale is complete. Commissioner Volk, you were thinking it was around thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, I talked to Jason before he left. He said roughly around thirty-five thousand is what they brought in on it.
Sounds like it was fairly successful. Next item of business, KLJ invoice for eighty-ninth Avenue South in Minnewalken for construction engineering for the amount of ten thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Motion to pay that bill.
Aye, so moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to pay KLJ for their eighty-ninth Avenue South Minnewalken job. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gesner?
Aye. Motion carried. Last thing on Jason's agenda is a invoice from KLJ for preliminary engineering for the twenty-twenty-six thin lift projects on Woods Rotten Road and McCray Road in Ramsey County four from Ramsey County eight to North Dakota seventeen for the amount of ten thousand nine hundred four dollars sixty-eight cents. Motion to approve.
I got, I got a question. So Paul, this, this thin lift, that's gonna do the whole road in McCray?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I just had a couple of people ask that question if that was gonna get done. Okay, so I can answer that for them next year. Okay. Yep, thank you. Thank you. I'll make a motion to pay that.
There is motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to pay KLJ for the preliminary engineering on the twenty-twenty-six thin lift projects. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Bulk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gesner?
Aye. Motion carried. Sheriff Lang, can you give us your lowdown in seven minutes?
Sure can.
Okay.
Good evening. I, uh, obtained a bid for three more in-car cameras. Um, as I was in here before when we ordered the other three, uh, our old system is obsolete. And they got a program going right now where we actually getting forty percent off for each one of these. Uh, so we're getting three of them for about the cost of two. And this is on, this offer is only good through January. So I had kinda planned on doing it next year, but being we have a forty percent off and I kind of watch my budget and I'll have money in my budget to pay for this. And it'll get me ahead of the ballgame here a little bit. And we'll be able to save some money instead of paying more if we wait for the next budget cycle.
So would this fit all the cars? We'll have them then?
Yes. All eight cars that are doing patrols, we'll have them then. And we'll have the whole new system and we won't have nothing that's out of date, that they don't make parts for anymore. So it'd be fifteen thousand eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents to order three more. I make a motion that we do this just to get every, all the cars so they're the same.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Uh, this is just a motion to order them, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
The order of them is at fifteen thousand eight hundred and two.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Anything else, Sheriff?
Nope, that's it. Unless you got something for me.
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. You got four.
I don't need that much. Um, eighty-ninth Avenue's a hundred percent complete out there. We went out and surveyed the seating area and everything. Um, they had to put out the fiber rolls around the inlet of the pipes and they got that done. Um, counted those up the other day. Um, the emergency relief projects, the four sites on the four, um, two paved roads and two gravel roads. They just gotta, they got those open striped, um, signs or the end markers up on the culverts. Those are done. They got those opened up before the completion date last Saturday, so they got the work done Friday, last minute like usual. But, uh, they do stuff to put up the fence at Crary and I did talk to that landowner and he's fine with that being after the fact, but um, and there's a little bit of fiber rolls they gotta put out there, but those don't impact traffic. So there won't be any LDs on those projects. Um, we got the, and the NDOT federal aid meeting is at eleven-thirty on Mon, next Monday morning down at NDACO. If you guys are in town for that. Jason's aware of that as well. And the Flex One Daps went in last month. We won't hear until the end of the year on that, um, for which one, if any of those got selected. And if they do get selected, they won't have money for them until twenty-twenty-seven anyway. Okay. And then, let's see, and then Jason had a, it sent Jason a draft contract for the hydraulics on Ninety-Sixth Avenue Northeast, but he must not have brought that to you guys yet. So, um, that can be next meeting. Then, I guess the only other, um, if you guys do happen to be down at NDACO, um, KLJ is having that, um, annual supper, um, at Jack's Steakhouse at six o'clock on Sunday. If you guys are in town, definitely welcome to attend.
Any questions for Paul while he's at the podium?
Eighty-ninth looks good.
Good, thanks. Yeah, close to do. Good job out there. That's the first job we've had with them that we didn't have any aggregate EDUx. So I was pleasantly surprised.
Thank you.
I think so. Yep, thank you. Don't see anybody. We go by that clock or that clock. Well, I'm gonna call it five forty-five for the appraisal hearing for foreclosed property. I forget, do we have to release that at another meeting officially or can I just do that?
Uh, if it's a separate hearing, commission, yes.
Okay, so we'll burn up some time. Is there a motion to suspend the regular commission meeting and open appraisal hearing?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. So now I will officially open the meeting. Is there anyone here? Louise, are you here to buy foreclosed property? No? Okay. I don't know. There's, there's a whole list. Um, well, since there's no one here, how long do we have to have it open? A minute, okay. We'll sit here for a minute in awkward silence then.
Yep. And the foreclosure sale will be the third Tuesday in November.
And everything's noticed and served and everything, or is that next step after this hearing? Okay, next steps. Okay. I'm sure he doesn't have enough going on.
Okay, entertain a motion to close the hearing and reopen the regular commission meeting.
I'll make that motion to close and reopen.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Paul, or to you? Come on up.
Many of you guys don't know me, Paul Christensen. I live out of Churches Ferry, was the former mayor till we, uh, closed up shop, ran out of money, had to close up shop. What I'm here for tonight is two things. In twenty-two, when we quit, and I, I knew there was, had a potential to be some problems, but prior to that, as the mayor, duly elected, I could control all the property in Churches Ferry that wasn't privately owned. In other words, the stuff that, uh, the state had or the state had bought out, was still in the name of Church, City of Churches Ferry. So I, I could control it. Well, after the dissolutionment of our town, I can't control it anymore. And I, I've, I've got some problems out there. Uh, you, you never heard of any problems out there until after two thousand twenty-two because I took care of them. After twenty-two, getting into twenty-three, as the media does its job, uh, out of staters, locals, everybody, they know that the city of Churches Ferry is quote-unquote defunct, not in business anymore. And over the years, uh, some of those people have gotten to know who I am, one way or the other. And, uh, a- after that, they just feel they can come in there and do whatever they want. Um, whether it be paying deer cameras, uh, put up deer stands, uh, go out to other parts of the property and hunt and do other things. And most of all, that property is within the city, original city limits of Churches Ferry, and some of it isn't. But it like, the biggest thing problem what I have is our city lagoon sits straight east of town on Old Number Two. Yeah, that big chunk of property that's just to the left of it there, I own that, that whole big chunk in there. I own that. I bought that from the city before we dissolved. I did not buy the lagoon property from them because I, I didn't think there was gonna be an issue. Uh, but I've, uh, our lagoon's even out further. That's the, that's, that's those mountains that are those extinct mountains. You gotta go out further to the east. There, you're getting in there. There, there's the two-cell lagoon, right there, actually three. I don't own that chunk. Jack's Hormones, the one right next to it to the west, right there. Yep, Jack's Hormones at, he's got it posted. Um, I don't have anything posted out there because I never did and I didn't think I had to. But over the last couple, three weeks, I've had some serious, uh, problems and, uh, I guess, uh, I, I'm here, what I'm here for is twofold. First of all, the century code says that once a community like ours is the funk ce- ceased to be and, and goes back to the, uh, uh, response be of the county, right in the century code, it says there in, in the century code that the county shall uh, appoint and hire a manager of, of said property. I've never come for that, um, official position, but I'm here tonight to ask for it because I, I, I need to have the ability to legally post that land to keep the midnight deer hunters and, uh, everything else out of that community. And I, I, I need some teeth. I need to be able to stand there when I ask those people to leave and know that I'm not gonna have the sheriff's department come in there and raise hell with me that I'm overstepping my bounds. And so I, I, I'm coming today to get that. I've lived out there. I'm sixty-seven years old. I've been there my entire life. Uh, we've got a couple of other residents out there, a couple of other households, but those people are not, they, they came in after the buyout so that they, and they really don't want no part of this. It's, it's just me. I take care of all that property. If any of you guys have ever been out there, you'll see, it's, it's as nice as Ruger Park, Roosevelt Park. I, I keep it extremely well-maintained. And I got a problem with that. Uh, you know, I really don't. I, I just, I love it. It's my, it's my home. I mean, that's, that's where I live. So anyway, that's, that's what I, 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 I'm, I'm here tonight to ask the county, the, the commission to, to appoint me as the legal manager of that property so that I can post this land up legally and keep people off of it and out of it. Mostly the hunters. They're my biggest fear. That's a real small town. They get in there, I don't care if it's with an arrow or a gun. I don't, or shotgun, I don't care. I don't, I don't want them in there. And I believe in the century code, it says you're not supposed to be within the, in the, uh, uh, inside of a city limits shooting. And these guys come in there at night, I hear some banging and clanging. I, I don't go out and go looking for them guys unless it's broad daylight. I don't go out there, but, uh, there's just a lot of s- stuff that's going on. They're, they're the worst people you can have. They're not your neighbors. These out-of-state fishermen and out-of-state hunters, they throw garbage around, they take a crap in the ditch and throw their toilet paper out there. I, I, I tell you what, I, I'm just, I mean, I, I, I do it, I clean it up. I don't like it and it, it kinda, kinda gives me a little bit of a chip on my shoulder, but nonetheless, I'm looking for that from you guys to officially appoint me as the manager of the Churches Ferry proper. Uh, going forward, for as long as I live. I'm sixty-seven, so it ain't gonna be forever, but, um, that's one thing. The other thing I'd like to do is you are in possession of that two-cell lagoon out there. I'd, I'd like you to come up with a reasonable price and I'd like to purchase that. That's seven acres. It's seven acres in that plot roughly. And I'd like to buy that from the county so that I own it. So that's just one other thing that I don't have to, that I can go out there and post that up and not have to worry about somebody telling me that I can't do it. I just, I'm, I'm tired of that. I, I, I don't think, uh, the guy's been treated too fair, but it, it's, the law is the law and I do understand that. But I, so I'm, I'm asking for those two things from, from the commission tonight here.
This is just for my own information, Paul. I'm gonna ask the state. So when Churches Ferry was dissolved, do those city limits, are those still city limits?
They are not.
Okay, so it goes back to the county?
That's, that is essentially county property. Uh, once dissolution happens, the property transfers into the care of Ramsey County. Uh, that's up to the county what the commission wants to do with that land and property uh, as part of the dissolution process. Uh, so the commission can choose to appoint Mr. Christensen to be the caretaker of that land, to administer it how the commission sees fit. If you wanna give Mr. Christensen the ability to uh, post that land for, uh, no hunting, essentially posting no trespass signs to keep hunters, fishermen, the general public off of county land. That is certainly something the commission can do. Uh, similarly, uh, the commission can choose to sell that land that is
Can't sell it. That's FEMA land. You cannot sell it, cannot be sold, no matter what.
The commission can choose to sell the land that is within, within Ramsey County's care and control. That would be something we would have to ensure that we have clear title on for being
There is no clear title, sir.
And when that is determined, that would need to be something that is posted for auction. We shouldn't be selling directly from the county to a private individual at some set price so that the general, so that the land is used for the benefit of Ramsey County, the general public, so that it is sold at the actual price.
So what Candy's got outlined there.
Mm-hmm.
That's the piece you're talking about, correct, Paul?
Yeah, with the triangle is, yep.
Okay.
That's, that's outside. That, that was never bought by FEMA.
Okay, that's what I was
All that property inside, the main original city limits was bought by FEMA. You can't sell it. You can't sell it. It's in your, in the county's hands, just like it was ours. We couldn't, we couldn't do anything with it. You can mow it. You cannot sell it. You cannot sell it. You should look that up. You cannot sell it, sir. It's impossible. You do it, you're, 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 you're going against federal law. So just be aware of that. I mean, I know that because when the buyout took place, believe you me, and we lost all of our tax base and we lost everything else out there, I was asking some real hard questions from Bismarck because they were the FEMA administrators. We've had guys, fa- families out there when we lost our lagoon that wanted to put, uh, drain fields in. Can't do it. You can't do it. You can't put anything on FEMA land. So you better, you should probably get some clarification on that. I don't know about the city limits. I think those still are, are, are there because that's the, that's the line that FEMA has control of. The federal government. I, I'm not gonna say FEMA. I'm gonna say the federal government. And if it can be sold, then by golly, I, I want you to sell it all to me. And then I wanna put people back out there. So, so you, you, you have to understand why, why there isn't anybody there. It's, it's not that they don't wanna come. They can't.
It's the easements that FEMA
That's correct. You cannot, you cannot build on it. You can't bring anybody in.
You can't build on it, but the legal title to the land can be sold to somebody else. There are easements that the federal government has placed on that land and land around the entire lake. That does not mean that the individual who agreed to that easement cannot sell the rights that they have to that property to somebody else.
And what are they gonna do with it?
That's up to the individual to determine what the price of the land.
If, if that's a true, true statement, I guess at this, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to buy everything. I'd like to make you guys come up with a number and I'll, I'll buy it all. If, if, if that is true, if that is a true statement that he just made, then I would like to buy the, whatever's left in town that I don't already own. So, because the only reason I didn't buy all that land is because I, I felt you, you were not supposed to. And we did. We did. About three years after the buyout, we sold some property to an individual. He didn't do anything with it, but he was going to. And all of a sudden, every year we get a, we get somebody to come out from Bismarck. And we ended up having to, we, we ended up having to give the guy his money back and revert that deed. I don't know if Candy, if you were auditor at that time or not, but they made it very clear that we could not do that.
That you couldn't sell
We couldn't sell it. We could not sell it.
It couldn't be used for whatever that land, that purchaser wanted to use it for.
Couldn't might be sold. Couldn't might be sold, cannot be sold, cannot be deeded to anybody else. That's federal, that's federal.
Then we don't own title to it, then the federal government owns title to it. Because.
City of Churches Ferry had title. All those titles, when they were redone on that property, were all put into the name of the city of Churches Ferry. So we went defunct. You revert to the century code and then the century code tells you exactly how to do it and all that property is now in the name of Ramsey County.
Correct. So then Ramsey County.
But they didn't go deed by deed and change it all out. If you went to look at them, they would, they would stay, they would, they would look just like they did when we were still incorporated.
Which I think should probably be updated so that it's properly reflecting that Ramsey County has title to it.
Well, before you go and do all that, I wanna buy it then. I wanna, I, 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 I'm at the commission here. I wanna buy it. If that's the case, I'll, I'll buy it.
So here's. Let's take care of what we can take care of. So. I'll open the floor. Anybody got any questions?
Uh just clarification, Mr. Christensen, Christensen is looking to the, the caretaker for Ramsey County property. In the former churches ferry. Uh city limits, basically everything that was transferred over. Part of what was just identified is. There's not really a whole lot of clarity as to what land is in Ramsey County's name or should be in Ramsey County's name that's. Still in churches ferry's name. Before any motions are made to have Mr. Christensen caretake that land, we should have a. More clear understanding of what exactly that motion would entail. Um there's state land out there that the. Uh state administrators that they have title to.
One small sliver. That doesn't change. That never, that's just like the deed restrictions that never changes. That's been there since old number two was over on the other side.
I just, before that motion is made, we should know exactly what Mr. Christensen is being given authority to restrict.
I own about a third of the property in that town and, and in the original city limits. Our alumni association probably owns another twenty percent of it. And then there's two other owners that own just some small parcels where their houses live. The rest of it. Is, is deed restricted. Basically FEMA property. What does that entail? I mean, I could tell you because I know it all, but I mean, I guess, you know. I'm not here to cause trouble. I'm just, I just, I just.
But it, it, we want it done right.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, yeah. I, I think to be the manager, it says it in the century code. I, I think uh when you manage something, you, you have some authority, not a lot, but some. And I mean, I'm not gonna do anything you don't want me to do. If you say, Paul, uh, you know, no. We don't want you to, we don't want you to post anything, then I'd say, well, I guess, and I, I, I'm not interested in the job, but, but. Um I, I think there's some responsibility that comes with the ma- with the uh, the uh management title. Nobody knows. Nobody knows where all that stuff is. I do. You know, I can go out there and point every, every, every lot. That's, that's uh open and not.
That's something that. That's something that we did like. Ten, twenty years ago. When FEMA started buying out property. Because then we know that has where FEMA behind it. Can't sell it. Can't touch it, can't do anything with it. That's.
Can never be on the tax rolls. It can't be anything. Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's like of all the. Pieces or parcels that say churches ferry city.
Right, right. You can't even put a power pole in legally. Yeah, 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 yeah.
It was a good idea the guy wanted to do, but.
Can't do it.
Unless there's more.
No, we wanted him in there just as bad as he wanted to come, but you can't. Once, once we dug into it too and the state guy said, no, we. And we weren't gonna, you know, we weren't gonna get in any financial or any, any uh trouble for that. Yeah, and, and the thing of it is, it, it doesn't move us because you can't tax it. You know, you just can't tax it. That's the state land, right? Where that cursor is?
So.
And it's just a sliver. Yep, up, up. See, that's where old number two used to go, original old number two. Well, the dyke comes down third street to number two, right where cursor is. It's third street, comes all the way out to that. And, and that's all dyke and then going north from that cursor, that's all dyke also. And, and the other side of the road's all wrapped, all the way out, almost all the way out to our lagoon on, on the water side. So just, but I think the state where those three, those three uh. Mountains are, I believe that's state land. And it's, it's nothing but cattails, solid cattails now. And you can't even, there's nothing, nothing to hunt there. I mean, it's. Yep, you see that curve? That, that's, that curve in there, that's state land, that right there.
So just so everybody's, you're not asking to post that, you're just asking to post.
No.
Was used to be.
No, no. Everything that's uh basically within the city limits.
Right.
And, and, and that lagoon cell, because you guys own that too. The rest of that you don't own. I mean, that's never was in the buyout. It's still private, you know, still private property.
So how are we gonna remedy this?
My concern is there's a lot of different parcels that are labeled as churches ferry. And you know, we've looked at four or five just now, but. The commission can choose to say everything that's labeled as churches ferry. Or owned as by churches ferry city. And the parcel viewer is under Mr. Christensen's uh care and control and he will. Manage it as directed by the commission. You can certainly do that. But when it comes to the churches ferry city with the FEMA behind it. Is that included in that? I just wanna make sure it's clear so that if Mr. Christensen does run into the sheriff's department with. Issues of hunters and fishermen out there, there is clarity for the sheriff's deputies who are responding to know. Where he has the authority to trespass the general public from versus where the general public has a right to be. Um similarly, a lot of hunter and fishermen are out there, uh that's on Devil's Lake. Um if the commission wants Mr. Christensen to be able to trespass people from. That land that butts up against the lake, certainly you can do that. But that, that should be clear so that Mr. Christensen knows what he has the authority to do in caretaking that land.
I'll, I'll just tell you that there is no parcels other than that lagoon. And I guess that state. That state deal, nobody has control over that. And obviously we don't get any tax money off it, nor does the county, anybody else. They'd have to come down fourth street there. They'd have to, or third street there. They'd have to come down third street to get there. Well, here's the thing. There's a, there's an iron gate. On third street. Just right there, right there where your cursor is. There's an iron gate there. It's chained and it's locked. For road and road and sign, road closed. It's got the, the signs that light up when your lights hit it. That, that road. Is not maintained, has not been maintained. It's basically the top of the dyke, just like the rest of the dyke that goes out and around. Way out at the end of that road where it hits old number two. I have a pump and I have a tractor. When I have to, I have to lift water up over that dyke. To, to get it out of the main proper of, of, of town. And so I have to be able to get out there with my pickup, obviously, and get the tractor out there to fuel it and service it to pump that water out. That doesn't happen every spring. Uh the last two or three, we, I haven't had to do that because there hasn't been enough runoff to, to, to bother. But other than that, that road is, is you, you, it's, it's got. Concrete, as you can see piled up on one side and the other side straight down, the dry side is straight down. It is a very unsafe. Place for anybody to be. Along the top edge where all that rip wrap is, the uh cottonwood trees have grown up. Their branches go probably halfway across the driving area. So if you go out there with, with anything. You're, you're rubbing, you're, you're rubbing in the trees, right? Can you hoof it? Yep. That's about the only way to get out there is, is, you know, we don't, I don't, you know, they wanna walk out there. You know, that's, that's their business, I guess, but uh. It, it's just a whole unsafe area. I mean, it, it just is. I mean, you get in that part of the road. There's so much debris from two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve and the lake was way up high. Boards with nails in them, all kinds of crap. It's a liability for the, for the county. And so is that road going out there. It's a liability for the county. That, that whole thing should be closed permanently. I'd, I'd love to see that closed permanently. The sheriff's department tells me that isn't possible or that's something you guys can do. But, but it should be closed permanently because it, it is a, it is a, is it a hazard? And I told him that in my shop, hey, it's a hazard. There shouldn't be anybody out there.
So we, but is that part of the dyke, Paul? What you were just talking?
The street is till you get out to there and then when it shoots north, that's part of the dyke. You know, you can't even, that's so narrow. It's about the same thing. It's so narrow. You can't even drive on it.
So from the gate east until you actually hit.
Yep.
Basically water there, that's part of your dyke.
Yes, it is. Yep. And the only reason it's in the goodest shape as it is is because all those years when the water was so high and I was out there. Two, three weeks, you know, almost every day pumping water over the, you know, because of that dyke, it, it, it's not, it's not a certified dyke. It, it keeps it out, but it, it seeps from underneath. So I mean, you gotta be out there pumping. I mean, been lucky the last few. It hasn't been that way, but. Yes, that is.
So. If I'm not mistaken, the city keeps people off the dyke. That's federal. Uh that was, okay, I'm sorry, I'm so ignorant on some of this. I should probably know this is half as well as you and I don't. So. Did FEMA build that or was that you guys built that?
The city churches very built that with their own money. Yep.
Okay.
Close built that force. Back in nine or ten, nine, I believe, fall of nine. When we could see it wasn't being, gonna make it here.
So the other question I have is, since there's still streets there. Do you wanna close those as well? Or you don't care? You just, it's just the land where these guys are stopping and using.
Where, where they basically leave, because everything's from where that car is there. From there east, even that little road that goes north from them, from there all the way out, it's solid cattails. I mean, they're as high as the ceiling. I mean, it's just solid cattails because of all the water. I've mowed them. I've mowed them several times. I tried to mow them in the fall. Can't do it this year. It's too wet, but I try to mow some of those down just to. Keep the snow from settling in there and stuff and to make it look a little better, but uh. It's, it's just. You gotta go all the way out to the water. You know? And the thing of it is, when you go straight out on that road till you can't go no more. The, the, the east ditch of old highway two, it's deep enough where there's no cattails, right? You go across it, like you can see right there, you go across that ditch. And then the solid cattails and that's posted. That's Roger Cantor's, Charles Studen's, Roger Cantor's. That's theirs, you know, that's posted up tight on Onyx and all that. It's just some of this that isn't and these guys, I'm telling you, I, they, I'm, they must study that Onyx. They must sit there and study that to know exactly, you know. What, what's left out there and whatever they think is theirs, they take it anyway. You give them an inch, they take a mile. It's typical. The amount of people that come there is very, very minimal. The ones that do come. That won't realistically say, hey, you know, you tell them, hey, no, you can't really come here and, and they tell you that you're, I'm wrong and they're right. You know, no respect. Cause their little Onyx thing tells them, you know, I, you know, church's ferry is defunct and I can go out there and hunt. They shouldn't be on those lagoon cells anyway, whether it's an active lagoon or not. That's illegal. I mean, you know, you know what I mean? It's, it's like. What do I have to do? That's why I wanna be able to legally post it. At the end of the day, it's in your guys' best interest. And mine. It's, it's a, to me, it's a win-win deal. I get the, I get the uh. The stress off of me, because now I'm scared. These guys have been in my shop twice, giving me shit. I, I, I don't need that. I'm sixty seven years old. I'm semi-retired. Get off my back. I stayed. I stayed through all that goddamn flooding. I watched my town go down to nothing. I mean. It's, it's emotional as hell for me. I don't have a problem with it. I, I've learned to deal with it and move past it. All I want now until I croak is, is, is some peace and quiet out there. And, and I had that until we, we had to fold up, you know? You ain't gonna hurt a voter. These guys ain't from Ramsey County. I mean, no one of you guys are gonna lose a vote on anything. I just wanna politically get this out here.
I'm, I'm, I'm not worried about who's gonna vote for me after being on here for three.
I know that. I, I've, 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 I've been in your guys' shoes too, you know, it, it gets.
I just, I just wanna make sure it's, it's, it, that there's no loopholes.
And so do I. I, I, honest to God, I do.
And me, Paul, I, I hear you. I'm. If we could save. One person's sanity for the last year he got left, that, that's what I'm looking at. I'm not.
Very much to ask for from this council, I don't think.
No, and I, and I agree with you. I mean, I just, I don't want to. Rush it and make the motion wrong, so it, it, it does bite us in the ass. Cause I'm with you. I, if, if I could give you your piece of quiet back, I'm. I'm there, okay? I just, I wanna make sure we do it right. So. If the motion, how do we say the motion? At least temporarily until we get some of these other legal questions asked, answered. I would like to at least put a moratorium on Mr. Christians' problem until. You're satisfied with the legal portion of it.
Sure.
Just, just so we're clear and he can. Get back to peace and quiet here at least till the end of the season here so we can get something more official.
So there's a few things. So first of all, streets, uh. I'm not sure if those were vacated by the township. My understanding is that hasn't been done, so those are still valid streets. Those can't be, you, people can't be trespassed from using those streets that still exist.
Got no problem with them using anything except from there out.
Um and then if Mr. Christensen is who the commission wants to appoint for that position. Um Mr. Christensen will need to execute a bond to the county in amount, in an amount determined by the commission. Um basically promising that bond is to guarantee that he's gonna faithfully perform the duties assigned by the commission. And, and there's no income coming in on this land, so that's not, there's no fiduciary issues there. But there would still need to be a bond pursuant to century code. Um and the bond uh should be executed by Mr. Christensen and a charity company authorized to do business in the state. So those are all things that would need to be put in place for him to have the legal authority uh from. From the commission to administer that land. And then ultimately, it's just making sure the commission is clear on what land is being placed in his care. Um, if that's everything that's labeled as churches, ferry, city on the uh. Parcel viewer excluding the ones that are labeled as FEMA. That, that would be, I think sufficiently clear. Uh, unless you see a major problem with that sheriff, I, I think that should be something that deputies should be able to follow. Um. I, I've had some conversation with deputies about that and as long as everybody's on the same page, that's my main concern, so. Um, certainly the commission can choose to have that land, uh, be no hunting, to have trespass signs put up for that. As far as Mr. Christensen's claims about it being a danger and the engineering issues. I would like to see somebody like KLJ go out and at least view that and confirm that from a engineering standpoint before. We permanently close things, just so that we have some verification. Not that I don't believe Mr. Christensen, but as he said, this is an emotional investment for him. And so I just wanna make sure that we're getting all of our bases covered. As far as what he's asking for today, I, I don't think it would be so far outside of. Uh, the century code that you can grant him that power preliminarily to have churches, ferry, city lands. Uh, posted for no trespass for hunting purposes.
Okay, so go over the bond portion of that again for me.
So Mr. Christensen would need to post a bond essentially to guarantee that he would execute the duties assigned by the commission faithfully. It sounds like he's been maintaining owing all those sorts of things.
Twenty-five years.
And so if you're just looking for him to basically post trespass signs, I, I, and I don't know what all you're looking for him to do. But that bond is really, that's, that amount is set by you, you can determine what's appropriate. Five hundred dollars, I, I think the state's attorney bond is like three thousand dollars, so it's not an exorbitant amount of money for those sorts of things.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that would give him authority to go on to the Onyx.
Yeah.
That way, if it's done electronically, you're not gonna get all this research.
Mm-hmm.
Then there's not false hope pursuant to someone drives here out of state. Or li- or li- outright lying to you. Right, well, cause then if it's, if it's electronically posted, they see it before they even get here.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it can clear up a lot of the misunderstandings. That, that's one of the reasons I'm here now, so that if, if we can get something worked out. That I can get that done, there's only so many times that you can go on there on Onyx and do that. You know, during the course of a year and it's too late now for, for two thousand twenty-five, I, cause I looked into that. So it, it, you know, now would be, it still would be on Onyx the way it is right now. It doesn't even list the county, it lists the city of churches ferry on all of that.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah.
And just to be clear, that doesn't touch any of the water as long as they're not.
No.
Right.
But yeah, no, that's, that is all part of what we can.
And at the same time as that, you can find those. If the land can be sold.
Yeah, we would need to look into what, what is in the uh. Title records for that land. If it's property with easements on it from FEMA, then that poses its own issues, but if it's just. City of uh, Churches Ferry City that was transferred into our care. As long as there's nothing that prevents the sale of those pieces of property, we can get those appraised, make sure that we're. Selling it for the appropriate amount of money. Uh, we don't wanna underutilize that land for the taxpayers. Um, and I'll look into whether or not it's required that there be an auction for that land before we sell it off to a private individual, I think the. Dollar amounts have a lot of uh, restrictions on how that can be disposed of.
There's only one parcel in the whole town. That's left, that the county has title to, is our old city hall. That was, you know. That's the only piece of property left that doesn't have a deed restriction on it. So, so I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there, there, that's all that's left is one.
Yeah.
That one big old brick building that, that the, you know, uh, wasn't bought out by FEMA, doesn't have any, it was, was. The property of Churches Ferry, you know, no deed restriction on that property. Um, but that is in your guys' hands. Or the county's.
Yeah, we, we would just need to look into that, make sure that everything, I, I mean, if we're gonna sell it, we have to make sure we have cleared title before we sell.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, that's farther down the road than.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Tonight.
My only question is, if we're going off a parcel viewer, are we a hundred percent certain that that's accurate? Well, I just mean, there's not a parcel that's labeled City of Churches Ferry that. Is actually should be labeled as something else, you know, are we? If, if that's gonna be our, our Bible, are we sure it's right?
It wasn't right when we were still the city. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
When you got a town that's a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty years old.
Yeah, I don't mean necessarily like each corner.
Right.
Saying like, if there's this parcel here that says Church is Fertile, it's actually. Bill whatever.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, there's two, there's two parcels, two little teeny parcels that are Salvation Army. There's another little parcel, it's a Carlson from Ca- from uh. From uh, California, I think he's probably dead. Uh, there's another little, just a little sliver for some, for some other people that, you know, there's just these little. That never took the buyout, they, they couldn't, they couldn't find him, they made it, they made a hell of an effort to find him because they had to. And some of these people just could, never were found. Some of that property went back for one of these things that you guys are doing now.
For closure.
For closure, you know, and, and some of that property was picked up that way because the, the people. Uh, you know, couldn't, couldn't, couldn't locate him, so, but it ain't much. There's nobody's gonna come out of the woodwork, I don't believe.
I just wanna make sure that.
Well, I, I guess that. I, I, I guess I don't see that being an issue, I'll be honest, I mean. That's, I'm probably giving somebody out there too much credit for using common sense to say it's not gonna be a problem, but.
Not, not knowing your, the, the politics of. The people that are left, if there was something that was not labeled correctly and then.
I think that probably would've come out of the woodwork way before now.
Yeah.
I. So, um, so what's the proper way for me to make a motion? As chairman?
Perfect.
Okay.
That's perfect.
And so. Okay. So I'm gonna go back to that bond thing because that always seems to bite me in the rear end if I don't have it straight. We set the price of the bond. So does this have, does he have to pay that every year or that's just through the time that he's? He, he's the manager.
And is there a length of time that?
You gotta pay it for bonds, it's just like it's insurance.
Yeah.
You gotta pay it every year.
I'm sorry, my, my.
Put some.
You can have it be reviewed every year, two years.
I'm thinking anyone's gonna wanna take it away from you, I just, yeah.
So I guess I would.
That's where your backing is important.
Yeah.
I think the bonding you'd probably have to have renewed every year though.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, we had to do that with our auditor when we were city, it's, it's an insurance, that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what it's for, cause I can't steal anything, I can't, you know, it's not like an auditor or anybody else who has their fingers on something.
Yeah.
Um. And I can't really make a mistake, cause I'm working for you guys. So I don't, I don't know what the bonding.
Well, that, that's why.
Criteria would re even before.
That, that's why I wanna make sure.
Well, if they start, if they, if they start it first, we're going over that dike.
I think it, it, yeah, okay. I mean, it's, it's part of the law, so that's gotta be part of it. Um, I guess I would make a motion that we make Mr. Christiansen the manager of everything within the old. City limits of Churches Ferry that does not have FEMA attached to it.
Or is not owned by.
Or is not owned by a private individual or another entity. Let's make it. Through. December of twenty twenty-six, just so we can make, give us time to make, you know, we can change it at any point. Um, with the stipulations of posting it as he sees fit for what he deems to be public safety. That good enough? Bond. Oh, and a bond of two hundred and fifty bucks. Of, to be Mr. Christensen's responsibility.
Yeah, less, less the, less the amount of that bond is, if two hundred and fifty is two hundred dollars a year, I ain't gonna do that. That's too much.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I, I'll, I'll kick out twenty-five bucks or fifty a year, but I ain't kicking out no big thousand bucks a year for.
I, I wouldn't think that that bond would.
Lot of, lot of fingers on that, you know?
Yeah. So now I gotta put a contingency in there?
So the premium on the bond shall be paid by the Board of County Commissioners from city funds. If any, which I don't believe there are any city funds left.
Yeah, there is.
That would be.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there is.
Mm-hmm. Then that can come out of city funds to be.
We turned over over three thousand. I know some of it's been used, no doubt.
Yeah. So the premium on the bond can be paid out of that money.
Out of that money, so that would.
Something.
Yep.
So then the premium isn't in question then, because.
Correct.
You can pay that.
Yeah.
I don't suppose there's any way in hell you can read that back? Everybody got the gist of that?
I'm sorry for taking up so much of your time.
No, that. Okay, that's, we should be doing stuff like this, Paul, in my opinion, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of them.
Okay, we've got that you want to appoint Paul Christensen, manager of the. Churches Ferry City land that is in care of Ramsey County. Um, and then I put. Um, no FEMA or other land owner.
It's all FEMA land, but it's in your care, you know, it's, it, that's.
But.
You're trying to say.
Is there paperwork on that? Do you guys?
Every deed, every deed's got the deed restriction, which has their rules, or it doesn't have the rules, but it has all the laws to it, every deed. There's about three pages of uh. Stuff, so I mean. You, you know, they just threw it all on our lap and left, of course, but uh. I don't know, yeah, you got it right, it, it's, it's not exactly right, but it's pretty close.
Um, then we'll review or it'll go till December twenty twenty-six. Um, posting as he sees fit with a two hundred and fifty dollar bond and the county to pay premium.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any other discussion?
Just clarity, after all that, motion's okay like that?
I, I believe that addresses the requirements of the century code, yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Otis. Bulk.
Hi.
Wilhelmie.
Hi.
Gesner.
Hi, motion carried. Um, so in the meantime, we'll get clarity on the legal parts for us and. Is there anything? Well, there is one more thing, um. We got in mail, um, Paul sent the bill for the seasonal upkeep of. The property we've just been talking about for two hundred and fifty dollars. Is, could I have a motion to pay that?
I'll make that motion to pay that. Second.
Motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Was that something that we had?
It was a verbal deal when this all ended.
So should that? Whether we do it now or later, should that become a part of the? Manager of said property that there is a?
I guess it's the reason it was verbal and the reason, I just send in kind of a little bit of a gas bill.
I'm sure.
I don't, I don't.
Your time.
As, no, it has, it ain't, it ain't even close, I don't want nothing in writing, cause I'm getting older. What I keep is slowly gonna, not, not in the next few years, but it's gonna start whittling back. Because I'm, I'm just not gonna physically be able to.
Right.
And so to, to, to have the, I don't want no responsibility, I, I guess that's the bottom line.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just a token, thi- this is a token. It's like somebody passed the hat at, at a, at anything, this is, that's what this is. And you can refuse that at any time too, you know, if you say, no, we ain't doing it. You know, so be it, I, I guess I'd have to take that as a, that you didn't like the work I did or do.
No, I'm fine with that, I just was.
I get, I.
I still, yeah, so I put the motion out that we just pay the.
Okay. You still have a second, right? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say, ah, we gotta do roll calls.
Otis.
Hi.
Bulk.
Hi.
Wilhelmie.
Hi.
Gesner.
Hi, motion carried. Anything else?
The only, only other thing I'd like to ask is if you could start working on getting me a deed for them, them two lagoon cells out there. I'd like to buy that, that's outside the city limits. I, I, you know, for a nominal fee, then it'll get back on the tax rolls, everybody wins, you know, not a lot of money, but it's like, it's better than nothing.
Right.
You know?
So that'd be part of the legal things that I think.
Yeah, draw up a deed.
Yeah.
You know, and, and uh, yep, I'll, I'll, I'll certainly buy it.
Okay.
Now I'm gonna be leaving in about two and a half, three weeks, so I, I won't be around, but uh. I will, I am gonna do some posting, I, I guess if I could get a copy of those minutes. Huh? Yeah, I, I, I want a copy of those minutes so that I, I'm gonna put them in my shop so that if I have problems. Here they are, this is what they did, this is, this is how it is.
Okay, so these minutes will have to be approved.
Yeah, once you're, once you're approved, yep, that's, that's, just, just, uh, yep, just, just throw them in an envelope and send me a copy and I, I sure appreciate it.
We can do that.
Then everything, everybody's covered and I, I thanks you for your time, sorry, took so much of it.
That's fine.
Thank, thanks again.
Yep, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business, right, we're done with everybody up top there. Uh, signage request from the abstract office, building committee recommendation.
So their request was to affix a sign to the exterior of the, the armory. With concrete anchors. Uh, the recommendation from the building committee is to deny that request to deviate from the lease.
Okay.
You have anything to add or Roger left and just not here, but.
No, I, I think just a recommendation to have a motion from the commission to deny that. Have them adhere to the terms of the lease.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would still move.
Good. Second?
This is the only question I have, they can put a sign out there, just not on the building, right?
That was the only stipulation we had is it could not be attached to the building.
Yeah, they, they had another option that would be a decal that went in the window, uh, basically just not.
Tom track, I just wanna make sure that they can still do a sign, not attach, and that's, I know that's what we agreed to, I'll second that.
Absolutely.
Good, motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Anything? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Hi.
Bulk.
Hi.
Wilhelmie.
Hi.
Gesner.
Hi, motion carried. Moving on to new business, we have uh, one veteran. Moving on to new business, we have, uh, one veteran credit for real estate. Then the packet. Entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Engagement letter for the bond issue. That was in your packets. Is there anything you'd like to explain, Daniel, or do you feel the need to?
Uh, I'm not too sure how involved Commissioner Volk has been in that process. Um, it relate, the engagement letters about uh, the bonding process for, uh, a new lawn for, a, a new jail for Ramsey County. Um, as you're all aware, that's kind of been on the list of things that, uh, the jail's been looking to do. Uh, this specific engagement letters you have in front of you, uh, talks about the Ramsey County's process for getting a bond put together. And then there's a, uh, a couple sentences, I think, there in the middle paragraph talking about, or maybe it's in the third paragraph, talking about, uh, there would be additional cost associated with pursuing a multi-county bonding issue, which is, uh, not something that, uh, happens, uh, very often, if ever, uh, here in North Dakota. Mister. Mister Werner, or excuse me, Wagner, uh, essentially said that, um, he'd be happy to represent the county to get bonding, uh, deadlines put together uh, for the county to kind of move forward and at least know what it would cost to get a new jail built, at least for our own purposes, if the, uh, party or the county members of the JPA uh, wanted to pursue a joint bond, that's something that could be looked at. Uh, I'm not sure if Commissioner Frith had more to add on that since he's not here today. But, um, as I think has been said multiple times by Commissioner Frith, Commissioner Volk, the sheriff, and uh, the LEC administration, a, a new jail is something that we are des- in desperate need of. Uh. And so I, I think we should at least know what it will look like to get a bond put together. Um, the bond is the cost of Mister Wagner's time and his, uh, law firm's time would be three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Uh, if, uh, and that would be taken out of any bond that is actually issued. Uh, if we choose not to move forward with the bond, then the county would be responsible for that three hundred and fifty dollars an hour, uh, whatever that cost would be. Um, there's no estimation of how much time he estimate, he estimates will be spent on this matter, so that's, that's an hourly rate. If it takes a hundred hours, then that's what it costs. And so this, this would be our obligation to pay him for his time, uh, to pay his firm for his time if, uh, we choose to move forward with it.
Do you have a recommendation?
I, I mean, i- it's, if thi- this is the point where the commission has to decide if you wanna sink whatever total cost of Mister Wagner's time will be into bonding for a new jail. Um, if you choose to enter into this agreement, we're obligated to pay him for his time. If at the end of the day, the commission decides not to move forward with the new jail, then we'd have to pay that out of pocket. And obviously, we're not obligated to build the jail at that point. It's just paying him for his time and the efforts that he puts in. Um. The individual jail cost would be less than what the joint power agreement, uh, multi-county jail would cost. Would be less than what that would be, but that, that's a lot of details that I, I certainly can't give you a recommendation on. I mean, this is a standard engagement letter. There's nothing out of the ordinary here.
Yeah.
Three hundred and fifty dollars an hour's a reasonable amount for the expertise that his firm is providing to the county. Um, if you wanna pursue looking into what that, uh, general obligation bond will be and how that process will work sooner rather than later, uh, with the changes to the century code. Uh, these bonds can only be put to the general public, uh, at primaries and general elections, so. Uh. I can't remember what the first, what, what date the primaries on, but you know, that's coming up here in seven or eight months. So the sooner we get on it, if that's what the commission wants to pursue, the better.
Well, I guess my feeling is this is gonna be part of the process.
Hmm.
We don't, if we don't investigate this, we're basically saying we're not doing it, so I don't wanna close that door, per se. Um. What are your feelings?
Do we need to act on this at this meeting, or can we table it till Jeff is here?
He hasn't put a deadline on when this expires, uh. I- it, it certainly could be tabled. That doesn't do anything other than delay the issue for another few weeks.
And all this does is pursue that they can do a bond.
This is having Mister Wagner put together a bond schedule of what deadlines the commission, the county needs to meet in order to have it properly voted on next year. This isn't obligating the county to pursue the bond at this time.
So my question to you, Candy, is. Did we budget anything for that? Okay. What's feeling of the commission? Only deadline I see here is he's gotta get stuff done so it can be adopted in March. So I mean, it's not like it's gotta be done.
Anything with primary election isn't gonna start until January, anyway. So. You're not. Hmm. Yeah.
So do we have a way to pay for this then?
Aye.
You gonna make money if you're out of thin air?
Sure. I'm gonna plant a tree. Mm-hmm.
Or we just take your savings?
Um, yeah.
Well, I guess I don't have a problem tabling it till Jeff's here. He's probably got the most in-depth knowledge of.
Been working it directly. The chair. And basically, this bond is just because we're, to get it on the ballot because we're trying to do it without our county's.
Uh, if the, so my understanding is there's a lot of back and forth with the member counties of the JPA of everybody being on board with the new jail and what that cost is gonna be. This specifically is only talking about what Ramsey County would be bonding for a new jail facility. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, basically, it'd be the same situation we're in now. We would only, they would cost share.
It.
Rent or whatever.
I- if that's how.
Because I don't know any other way that. I don't know any other way that you would have five counties owning in, but it's still in this county. You, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. But that's what's going on now, right? Cuz everybody.
They're paying us basically.
No, the LEC is its own entity, is it not?
Oh, yes. Yes. Let every county buy it.
Right, so we're renting from the, so I mean.
Right.
Right now, it, it's set up that way that the LEC is its own entity. They would own this. It would just be funded by the counties, however, counties figure it out.
Right.
So again, I will. Well, what's your view?
I'll make the motion to table it.
Okay. Motion to table this till the next meeting?
Second.
More, motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Last thing on the agenda is Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan, which we have to vote on today. So everybody was on the email, were they not? From the HR.
Yeah.
I'll wait till Bill gets back. So I believe everybody was in the, on the email chain that, uh, had the HR questions and answers on it. I guess from what I got out of the emails, she kinda rec- recommended that we go from twenty thousand. Uh. What do they call that? Stop loss to thirty thousand. Um. That would end up saving us substantial amount of money from the plan that we currently have. This is all still the grandfathered plan. Um. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then. Except for the price obviously.
Yeah. Yep. Yes, you know, the other option is to go to the fifty thousand that would decrease it by some more, but I think that's kind of a big jump to take at once.
I'm gonna take it as a good idea as long as it's still wrapped.
Yep.
It is.
It won't change anything on the employee side. It'll be on our side of it. Yep.
I can sell it.
Mm-hmm.
That was what I would.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not here to affect the employees, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Trying to keep them whole. The plan's been working. You know, but it's, it's on our side. I can understand that for savings, but I just don't wanna take anything away from the employee.
But eventually, somewhere down the road, that grandfathered plan will end. Will end. Just like they forced us.
And as soon as that happens.
Then.
It's gonna cost the county so much money, and that's why you're seeing other counties changing. Where when the grandfather clause goes away, they start charging the employee.
Right.
Because the percentages go so high that you can't afford it, so they gotta start taking something from the employee.
Right.
And, and that's not what I'm willing to do right now.
No, I'm not either.
Mm-hmm.
Ride the, the train while you can.
Yep.
And make that decision down the road.
Yep.
I'll make that motion to make the stop loss of thirty thousand for the savings that we'd save, but everything else is according to the grandfather. And I'll second it.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Hi.
Volk.
Hi.
Wilhelmie.
Hi.
Gesner.
Hi. Motion carried. That concludes everything on the agenda, except visitors, delegations. Louise already introduced her counterpart there. So I guess, call the media, oh, you got something, Jer?
Yes.
This thing in Church's Ferry, I would suggest that the county commissioner get a hold of him. And when he put his posters out, make sure it's posted with the Ramsey County Commission as the one posting it instead of Paul.
Okay.
Which will make it much more clear to the deputies, especially the game wardens and the federal game wardens that have been working in that area. I agree. We should just make one great big sign to put on that gate because that's where our problem is, where they're walking down that road. And even on the other side of the tracks, where we're dealing with Burlington Northern, with them walking on the tracks. So, but I, I just wanted to make a point that it should be posted by Ramsey County Commission.
That probably a solid point.
That's all I think.
Okay. We need to make that official. Okay.
You can, you can direct him to do that.
Okay, I will do that.
Caretaker for the county.
Okay. Anything else?
I got one thing. With the federal government shutdown, uh, SNAP with the social service program has created an issue with a lot of people that need food and there's no money's available for them to get that, so just here aware.
Okay. Anything else from any of the commissioners' portfolios? Meeting adjourned.
Seven thirty rolling?
Yeah.
I'm just.